I'd like to call this meeting of Zion City Council to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Detteen?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Mayor Hill?
Here. Pastor Pipes?
May we bow in a word of prayer. Our Father who art in heaven, we come before you this day with thanksgiving in our hearts. We come before you today because there is a great need for you and the city. There's a great need for you to weigh in on the emotions and the decisions that will be made here tonight. We pray right now that you will give peace to both sides of every situation. We pray now, in Jesus' name, that you will step in and you will make all things that are wrong right. We thank you for the city that we love, we thank you for its people, and we thank you for its government. We pray this prayer in Jesus' name, and we ask you, if it be your will, that you take over in every situation and make the rights, make the wrongs right, and make all things that are not like you, or all things that are not progressive and productive to the city, Father, to go away. We pray this prayer in Jesus' name, and in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Would you stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four on the agenda, or agenda changes. Do any of the commissioners have changes to the agenda? Is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So moved.
A motion and a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Detteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number five is going to be citizens' comments. First is Mr. Cal Schneider.
Thank you for allowing me to speak before you tonight. Unfortunately, I was not in, even in the state, two weeks ago, and so I appreciate the time to be able to address you tonight. I am Cal Schneider, and I'm a resident with the harbor of Illinois. I'm going to briefly tell you a little bit about myself, because before I talk about advanced disposal, I think you'll have a better understanding about why I'm here, if you have a better understanding as to what makes me tick. I graduated from Zion High School, went on to college, got a master's degree in business, a bachelor's degree in business, a master's degree in counseling, and a master's degree in school administration. I tell you my education only because I want you to understand I could have gone anywhere to make a living, but I came here and raised my family here and gave back to this community. And I'm going to share briefly about the different ways that I have shown my love that you have for this community. For 32 years, I served as a teacher, guidance counselor, and a grant writer for the students and faculty at Zion Benton Township High School. While I was at Zion High School, I also was the coordinator of a program called Project Pride. Project Pride is a mentoring program where we use volunteers from the community to come in and mentor some of our students at the high school. The governor of Illinois liked that program so well that he came in and sent evaluations of our, of that program and gave the city of Zion the honor of Governor's Hometown Award. Pretty significant, in fact, it's this very body gave me a letter of recommendation for my, my assistance in helping make the city of Zion a better place. I also served many years on the Zion Township crew board. I served 22 years on the Beach Park School Board, 12 as their board president. I also spent 25 years on the eldership board at North Point Church, right from the very beginning. I was on that eldership board, stayed in that church until he built his building on the corner of Ninth and Lewis Avenue. I also served as a Zerwana commander as a ministry where 200 kids would come on Wednesday night along with 70 adult volunteers to serve our young people in our community. After retiring from Zion, and also developed a character education program at Zion High School. If you walk into Zion High School any day, you look in the walls and it'll say, "The ZB Way," "Respect and Responsibility." And we use those two words to guide the behavior of our students and our faculty and staff. Upon retirement from Zion High School, community leaders from Zion asked if I would help guide and direct a program called Community of Character. I'm sure you're aware of that program, and in fact, the city voted on the six character traits they wanted the community to be, to guide them, and those are respect, perseverance, responsibility, safety, integrity, and kindness. In fact, the city of Zion's police department, along with community leaders, put on a community walk every fall to promote those, those character traits. That's why they're important in our community. Now, I want to talk about Advanced Disposal. Now, let you know a little bit about me. Advanced Disposal is a bully. And I'm going to explain to you why.
Okay, you're going to have to get out quick.
Okay, I'm going to go as quickly as I can. They're, they're a bully. Seven years ago, they purchased seven homes along Kenosha Road for $450,000 to make the advancement of that, of that landfill. And now, they purchased some other homes along Kenosha Road, and now there's four houses left on Kenosha Road. And I own one of those four houses. And I've talked with Advanced Disposal about those homes, and they've told me that they've given us an offer to purchase their homes over the next five years. But in that offer, they said that we can decide not to buy our home for any reason at any time over the next five years. Well, what happens in the next five years? They get the expansion, they get the permit, they get everything they need to make their expansion, and then they can come back and tell me, "We're not going to buy our home." When I said that to them, they said, "Well, then, we're going to go around your home if you're not going to accept this, this proposal." And I said, "Wait a minute, you're going to go around our home?" "Yeah." And I said, "Wait a minute, how can that be?" I looked up at the Environmental Protection Agency, and they said, "They'd have to 500 feet from a private residence to where they can put garbage into the ground." And so I brought that to them, and they said, "Yeah, that's right." Well, my home sits a little over an acre, 250 feet from the back of my home to the back of my property line, and then it would only be 250 feet into their property line where they could start putting garbage into the ground. And they told me that was correct, and I said, "How can that be?" They said, "Well, what we'll do is we'll put an access road right behind your property then." So you can have an access road where garbage trucks are going to go up and down the road. So I get the smell of the garbage and the, and the, seeing of the trucks of the garbage dump. I'm trying to make this really quick. So, what's fair? What determines fair for this home is what has been done in the past. And what's been done in the past is nothing like what they're trying to offer us tonight. So, with that being said, I'm going to cut it short. I think the only decision that you folks can make at this point in light of our community of character, because that's what I'm here for, because they've not shown respect, they've not shown responsibility in their actions, and they've been a bully. And working in a school system, it doesn't take long to identify a bully. And you folks are the only folks that have authority over, over the advanced disposal for them to do the right thing. So I would suggest that you vote no on this annexation and on the host agreement until this gets cleaned up. That is the only right decision that you could make tonight.
Cal, I got a couple of questions.
Yes, yes.
I just want to be sure that, that everybody understands that we've talked about this before. And it's my understanding, did you sell a home that was covered under the price guarantee?
Yes.
And when was that?
That was four years ago.
Four years ago?
Four years ago. And I owned, I owned a home on Meadow Lane. Meadow Lane is the subdivision on the other side of Kenosha Road. And, but I will also tell you, I was very active when BFI wanted to do that, that first expansion. And that's why I knew all about that, that host agreement and what was in there, because I was very active, because when BFI first came in, they said there'd be the 20 years they're going to close up and then move on. Well, that obviously didn't happen.
Okay, all I want to know is, did you, you did sell a parcel of property under the guaranteed price?
Yes.
Okay. And, and what was the estimated value of the price at the time that you sold the home? And what did BFI or Advanced Disposal buy it for?
The house was appraised at $270, and I believe it sold right around $210. That would be the difference.
Okay, they bought it?
They didn't buy anything. They, they paid the difference between the purchase price, the $210.
So you got the $270 from?
Yes.
Okay.
The difference, the difference between $270.
All right. Then I got to ask, when did you buy the home on Kenosha Road?
I bought it in 2005, which was actually even before that other expansion in 2007.
You bought that in 2005?
In 2005.
Okay. Aye, thanks.
Any other questions for me?
James Hartman?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is James Hartman. I'm the attorney for Benton Township. I'm here tonight concerning the proposed annexation of the Advanced Disposal property, as most of the people here tonight are, I imagine. As I think you all know, that property that's under consideration for annexation lies within Benton Township presently. As I know you all know, the city of Zion has a very unique relationship with Zion Township in that you are coterminous. So the boundaries for the city of Zion are the same as the boundaries for Zion Township. And there's a unique provision in Illinois law that says that if a coterminous municipality annexes land, that land also comes into the, into the township that the city is coterminous with. So in other words, the city of Zion brings this property into the city, the property also leaves Benton Township and, and joins Zion Township. There are ways this can be avoided. It can be avoided through an intergovernmental agreement. It can be avoided, the Benton Township may be able to take legal steps to avoid that as well. The purpose of my being here tonight is to ask this council to consider tabling the issue of annexation and this annexation agreement until the concerns of Benton Township, which is, after all, your neighbor, has been heard and hopefully addressed. At no point in this process did Benton Township receive notice this was happening until we received notice of the public hearing two weeks ago, and at no point has Benton Township been included in this process in any meaningful, any meaningful way. We feel we have a stake in this process, obviously, given that the land that stands to be annexed to Zion will be disconnected from Benton Township. And if the annexation goes through, obviously, many of the, many of our residents, Benton Township residents, will be affected by what goes on, on this property. Many of them may, many of these people here tonight may in fact be Benton Township residents. So with all that in mind, while I understand this is on your agenda tonight, I would respectfully request you table authorization of the agreement and consideration of this annexation ordinance until a later date, until, you know, all parties that have a stake in this outcome have had a chance to participate in the discussions regarding it.
Have you had any discussion with Advanced Disposal at this point?
I have not.
Okay, so you've been aware of this for two weeks, and you haven't talked to them about what your concerns are, and you want us to table this until your concerns are at least addressed or discussed with, with Advanced Disposal?
Until our concerns are discussed with the city of Zion and Zion Township. I imagine Advanced Disposal, whatever role that has, well, I know our supervisor has spoken with someone from Advanced Township. I have not. Our concerns are more so with the city and with Zion Township.
But what are your concerns with the city?
This property will, will be removed from Benton Township and placed into Zion Township with the city of Zion.
Right, it's my, it's my understanding that when that happens, the city has an obligation for, how many years?
Ten years.
Ten years to pay you the, pay Benton Township the taxes that you would ordinarily receive on that property. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Is that, is that the issue that you want addressed?
That's, that's, that's one of the issues. It's not the only address, it's not the only issue.
What are the other issues? I mean, you're asking us to table it because you want us to address issues. I'd like to know what those issues are.
Well, and I, and I, we can certainly discuss those issues. My supervisor, Mr. Booth, is here. I don't know that this is a forum to discuss all those issues. The main concern that we have is we've not been a part of this at all to address any of these issues. So, yes, the tax revenue is, is a concern. It's not the only concern, though the concern, as I said, we have, we have residents that are going to be affected by the use of this property as well, and, you know, we're here on their behalf.
Where are those residents located?
Any residents that would be, any residents that would be affected by what could be going on?
Okay, you guys are all Benton Township?
No.
Some of us are Winter Harbors, some are Benton Township.
Okay, how many are Benton Township? And where do you, where are you located? I'm just trying to...
If they're in the harbor, they're still in Benton Township.
Okay, so everybody who's, everybody who's here against this is basically Benton Township. Okay, that's right.
Okay.
Yep, thank you. Sean Collins?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you. So, I'm a lawyer. I represent these people who live across the street from the landfill. They're the ones who've been putting up with it. Right, I think what's happened to them is something that we don't like to think happens in this country. What am I talking about? Well, we say we need a place to put our garbage. I think we all would agree with that. But for a landfill that benefits, let's say, hundreds of thousands of people, I don't think any of us believes it's fair that 100 or so families ought to bear the brunt of it, so that other people can have a place to put their garbage. These folks deal with the stink, and the noise, and the dust, and only them. And they're the only ones in all of this who aren't compensated, who aren't protected. Now, what the city of Zion did in 2010, and I'm sorry, but I don't know whether any of you were a part of it, but it was the city that did it. All right, you allowed the landfill, the city of Zion allowed the landfill to move 1,000 feet closer to these people. Some like to say these people moved to the landfill. No, they didn't. The landfill moved to them, and the stink, and the noise, and the dust. And now here we are again, talking about doing it to these same people again. The other thing that's not American here is they're not represented in all of this. They're here in front of you, but they don't pay taxes here, and everybody knows it, and the landfill knows it, and you know it. They don't pay taxes here, they don't vote here, they are at the mercy of this process tonight at your mercy. Now, you have an extraordinary opportu, not an extraordinary, you have an opportunity here to protect people. Everybody here understands that you are here for the people of the city of Zion, and first and foremost, that's your obligation. Nobody quarrels with that. I think the question is, is as a matter of decency, and to not put these people back again for decades in the same fix that they got put in in 2010, by the same, very same decision that you're contemplating voting on tonight, is there something that you can do in decency to protect them? And that you should do, even if they don't vote for you, and even if they don't pay taxes to operate your city? Is it going to happen to them again? Is the landfill once again going to move close to them with all of its noise and stink and dust and birds? And they're the only ones who are being called upon in this state to have to bear the brunt of all the bad things that the landfill supplies? Is it going to happen to them again? It, it doesn't have to. It doesn't have to, right? You can require, you have the power to require that they be taken care of. What do I mean? What do I, well, first of all, if you really believe that there has to be an annexation, there has to be a common sense recognition of what they're going to have to deal with. They should be compensated, they should be protected. There are multiple ways to do it. I'm happy to talk to your council, Mr. Mayor, and council people. I'm happy to talk to anybody who will listen to me about what can be done commonsense-wise to protect people. If we need to dump garbage somewhere, and if hundreds of thousands of people benefit by that, let's not do it on the backs of 100 or so families, and forget about them while we're taking care of everybody else. Thank you.
I got a couple of questions. There was a, the comment that you've just made about compensation?
Mm-hmm.
That was brought up at the, at the public hearing.
Yeah.
And I believe it was brought up by you, or was it, then it was your?
It was brought up by my partner, at least, maybe others, but my partner for sure.
In the last, in the sense that hearing, have you had any discussions with Advanced Disposal about type of, some type of compensation going here forward?
No, no, we haven't. We tried to talk to the mayor for, the lawyer for the city of Zion, who said that that wasn't something under consideration. So if Zion is not going to consider it, if its lawyer is not involved in something like that, then it's not going to happen. We thought we would start there. Since you're the ones taking the vote tonight, the landfill is not. Happy to talk to the landfill about it, but if Zion is, as a community, isn't willing to say, "This is something we want as a condition of this deal going forward," there's no point in talking to the landfill. Why, why would the landfill, they, they don't need us, they need you, not us. So if, if the city of Zion says, "This is something we want to see done as part of this deal," then the landfill will have to pay attention, and I think there's a very good chance something will get done. This isn't that hard to do. This isn't that hard to do, but it's got to start with a common sense recognition. It is fundamentally unfair that these people have to bear the brunt of something that's going to bring benefit to just about everybody else involved.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Carrie Johnson?
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you for hearing me again for the third time. I feel like I'm getting to know everybody here fairly well. I don't have anything prepared tonight or formal. I just want to leave you with just a few last thoughts of the reality of my life since Friday. Friday, I sent, I don't know what number of emails this is actually at at this point, but the email consisted of recordings of noises so loud from the landfill Friday morning, my dogs barking, trucks beeping. It was, it was ridiculously loud. I sent my email. Nothing changes. Monday, on my way to work, paper was blowing down the street out of the landfill, turkey vultures were flying overhead. I didn't, I didn't have a chance, I was busy, I didn't send an email. Today, there were twice as many turkey vultures as there were yesterday, if you can even imagine that, and it smelled of methane gas. So I, it's a day in, day out, it's always something. It hasn't changed, it's not going to change unless somebody here makes it a point to make it change. And as everybody before me has said, we're hostages here. To give you a tangible representation, I built my home in 2005, new, spent $350,000 on this home. Two years ago, an identical home across the street, down the street, had an offer on the table. When the people drove into the neighborhood and smelled the dump, they withdrew their offer. The home eventually sold for $230,000. That's a third of the value of the home. So sure, if I want to put my home on fire sale and leave and take 100,000-plus loss on my home, I can go. I don't know how many people are willing or able to do that. And then I write my check for $10,000 a year in property taxes. So I just, you know, I want to leave you with these real thoughts as you consider this, because I know it's impacted my family, and that's just me, I'm one of many. So thank you.
Are, are you covered by the, the value, home value protection plan?
No. I'm in the subdivision Prairie Ridge Estates, so I was, we were not covered in any sort of agreement, but I'm technically, as the crow flies, about a half a mile, I was a half a mile last year from the act of digging and burying, but we're closer now.
Okay.
That goes quite a distance back.
Right, I know. I guess my question is, is there a home value protection agreement associated with the expansion?
Yes.
There is, and that will, how far will that extend?
I think it's the same distance, but from the new foot, I believe is how, you know, there is the expansion, and I don't have the...
I think it was 1,500 feet.
Yeah.
That's in section four on the Second Amendment to the Host City Agreement.
So, so my question is, how, how did that work in an instance like this, where the property was valued at $350,000 in 2005? And let's just say, today it's worth $230,000 is what the, a neighbor sold their identical property for. Would the home value protection plan apply to the $230,000 or the $350,000?
I think the way, the way it works, and again, I haven't reviewed the, the plan before this evening, I think what happens is, they receive an offer, they don't believe it's a market offer, then there's an appraisal for home without the effect of the landfill, and the difference is paid. There's a, there's various steps you go through.
Yeah, I've got it here. Okay, right, I can remember that now.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir?
A question?
You, you need to come up and speak at the microphone, and it's, we're not going to get into a question and answer period here. This is citizen comments.
That's what should be easy. I heard the gentleman say that this, this new limit for the 1,500 feet was only going to apply to where they're going to dump, or where they're dumping now?
No, I asked...
Is that the entire thing?
My question was, 25 years from now, is it, is this, is the home value protection going to follow, if this, if this property is annexed, is it going to follow Kenosha Road all the way up to Russell Road and then extend 1,500 feet east from there? And I believe the question, the answer that we received, which, yes, it is.
Is it also going to cover what's in, in play right now?
Yes.
Because, so in other words, it pretty much goes all the way around.
But what we're looking at, what is in front of us right now is an amendment, the Second Amendment to the host agreement.
Understood.
The original host agreement calls for 1,500 feet within, I, I thought it was the property line. I don't think it's where they're dumping. I thought it was 1,500 feet.
You're correct.
From the property line.
You're correct.
And that applies to the, to the, where the landfill is right now, and it would also apply to where the landfill gets, I, I believe it would be cut off at Russell Road, though. I don't think they're going to go into Wisconsin or anything.
Thank you.
I don't think they'll take it into Wisconsin.
It does list, it says 1,500 feet from ADS property, and then it lists additional streets. So Oakview Estate subdivision, Oak Lane Block, Lane, Third Street, Prairie Avenue, Clearview Court, and it excludes property outside the state of Illinois.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to make a couple of comments, and then the council will discuss what we need to discuss and figure out what we want to do. I am, and you people are right, I don't mean to be a hard guy about this, but my primary responsibility, as you have all said, are to the citizens of Zion. Right now, the city receives approximately $2.6 million a year in tipping fees from Advanced Disposal. Right now, we're trying to plug a hole in our budget of $1.5 million. So if the time comes when, when we're, if we would not annex this, the city would, could, we'll be facing a deficit of $4 million. Those are, those are just the facts out there. I know you don't, a lot of you don't care about what our problems are, but I'm, I'm just trying to explain this openly and honestly, and I'm going to, I'm, I'm known to tell you what I believe, whether you get angry with me or not. So I just want to be sure that you understand what the financial implications are for the city of Zion. The other thing I believe is there's going to be a landfill there. And if we would not annex it, I am confident that the county will build a landfill there. SWALCO is responsible for solid waste management in Lake County, and my guess is, it's going to, it's going to go there. It's got the right clay, it's 110 acres, there's a lot of reasons why the landfill would go there. So I am, I, I would have two, two separate decisions. One of them would be, okay, if we don't annex it and there's not going to be a landfill there, that's one thing. But if we don't annex it and lose $2.5 million, and there's a landfill there anyway, that is like, that's very stupid on our part, is, is what I would think. However, I hear two issues being raised, and I have a question for, maybe it's you guys again. I thought at the last meeting, somebody said that there were, there's a landfill in DuPage County, that they don't have any of these problems there, that it's managed better than Advanced Disposal, and there are 200 items that you could give us that could be done to make this work.
That was our, our... That was our counsel. Shaun's associate.
Okay. And Commissioner McDowell asked if we could get those things, and we have not received them. So I'm, I'm...
What I've received from the lawyer is a complaint and a lawsuit. So in, in the complaint, it just basically says exactly what you've been saying about the odor, the debris, the birds, the, the noise, the dust. So those were the complaints that were being raised, but as far as what, what you would like to see happen with a landfill there, I mean, there already is a landfill there, and there already are problems. So I guess the question is, how do we mitigate those problems? So I guess the question is, how do we mitigate those problems? And I don't know enough about landfills to, to address those issues, but I'm sure that the experts at ADS know how to address those issues, especially with the lawyer stating, like the mayor said, that there are landfills that operate in residential areas that don't have these problems. So I would like to know, what do they do to, to avoid some of the issues that you're facing?
And I guess my comment is that Commissioner McDowell said this pretty much the same thing at our last meeting, and no one's helped us out on this. So I don't know what you want.
Do you want, do you want to say, or do you just want to ridicule and leave it at that? Are you interested in the truth? Or do you want to just ridicule, take a shot, and then move on?
What I have done is I've, I've asked, two weeks ago, we were told that we would get the information. I'm, I'm telling you, we don't have the information, and if that's taking a shot, then I'm taking a shot at you.
You've been, you've been working on this, Mr. Mayor, for two years, and now we don't get you something in two weeks, and I don't know who said what last week. I can get you a complete list within a week, probably much less than a week, and that's a promise I'm making to you. Now, you've been at this for two years, and you're criticizing us for not coming up with something in two weeks. I think that's unfair. There are solutions. You should know about them. Very honestly, you shouldn't depend upon me to know about them when you're seriously considering doing this. For all the money that the city will be taking in, you should have had someone counseling you on this, and obviously not the landfill, because they haven't proven that they care enough to protect their people.
And it's my understanding, and I guess I'm going to, I'm going to ask you to, this is not, you're past your time of public speaking. Most of these issues are going to be taken up in the sighting hearing. We are not experts in this, and we don't pretend to be experts in this. We're talking about an annexation right here. And, and, and you, and a representative from your firm said that you would get the information to us, and you did not do it. And I'm asking, are you going to get it to us?
Yeah, within one week, yes. Who should I get it to?
Get it to Commissioner McDowell.
Okay.
And he'll get it to the rest of us.
Let us understand, it's not just an annexation agreement. What's also on the table tonight is how the city is...
I know it, I know what's on. Don't lecture me.
Which is the car before the...
Do not lecture me. You had, you had an opportunity to speak and bring this up. I'm asking about questions that, that we asked and were responded to two weeks ago. And I've got, I've got another question for you then. The issue of tipping fees or compensation, I'm not, I'm, came up. I want to know if anybody talked to Advanced Disposal about that.
I gave you, I gave you the same answer that I gave you a couple of minutes ago, and it, you know, it hasn't changed in the last five minutes. The truth hasn't, which is we raised it with an attorney for your city. The attorney for your city said it was something that was not being considered. If you, because your city's a party to the agreement, if you're not considering it, there's really no point in going to the landfill about it because they don't care about these families. They've proven that. Okay? If the city cares about this, right, then we can have a responsible dialogue about it, and I think very quickly, either come to an agreement that makes everybody happy, or very quickly come to the realization that no agreement is to be had, and then everybody can go do what they need to do. All right? This isn't, this isn't that difficult to do if we have the right people talking about the right issues. It at least is not very difficult to find out whether there's a deal to be had that helps everybody and, and, and makes the city of Zion feel better about protecting its citizens, which is your oath.
I guess there are a couple of ways of looking at this. There are, there are, we have to be, well, these are private citizens with a private company, and you're objecting to what they are proposing to do here. And you're telling me that, that you have not sat down to talk to them about you want compensation and you want best practices, and you haven't sat down to talk to them. You know, you're, you're telling me that we have to step in and make them do what's right. Do they know what you think is right?
Yes.
They do, going forward?
Oh, yeah.
You've, you have, so then you have talked to them?
Not, not, not recently, I haven't, no.
Okay. Has anybody talked to them about compensation going forward? And you've said no. You want the city to do that. I'm not sure that's our place. I think our place is to, if you, as a private citizens group, and Advanced Disposal, as a private company, get together and come up with some type of a solution, we can put it in writing, and we can be part of the annexation agreement to be sure that it does happen.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, what is in the interest of the city of Zion? All right? Is not creating legal vulnerability for the city. Okay? In 2010, all right, the city of Zion gave this landfill the right to move 1,000 feet closer to the people. That was the problem. Okay? If the city of Zion could ever claim ignorance in 2010, if that ever could be truthfully done, it can't be done this time because you're on notice now about the problems this causes. Okay? And it is the city, if the city of Zion takes this action without protecting these people, your lawyer can tell you what issues that creates for the city of Zion. You don't need me to do that. You don't have to believe me. Believe the lawyers you're paying.
I think what we need then is, is a list of things that constitute the protection that you're talking about. Now, I mean, what you have said is we've got odor problems, we've got dust problems, we've got noise problems, we've got debris that comes into our neighbors' properties and birds. So I mean, that might be the complete list. And I think what we need then is how, how do we mitigate those things? Is it possible to mitigate those things? And I don't know the answer to that. I would imagine that the, the experts that operate the landfills know how to mitigate those things. And that's, that's what we need, is I guess all of us talking together about what those things are, how to mitigate those things.
Well, if, you'll have it within a week, if you tell me to whom I should submit it, whether it's yourself or the mayor, your lawyer?
They'll go to the whole council. If the mayor wants it to come to me first, that's fine, I'll just pass it on.
One other thing about this, a few minutes ago, there was discussion about this property value protection agreement. The problem with it is so obvious that you could stare at it and miss it because, because I did. And the problem with it is, here's the, the truth of what goes on, okay? People purchase a home, it's beautiful, you know the area, it's, it's beautiful. It's a place you'd like to raise a family, and they move there, and it's fine. And then because of the actions of somebody else that you have no participation in, a landfill moved closer to you and invaded your property in a variety of different ways. Now the landfill says to you, I will compensate you for the property value you have lost, and here's the kicker, but only if you move. You leave. I'm here. I'm the landfill. You leave. That's the deal. You leave. I don't care if you've raised your family here. I don't care if you've been here for two or three generations. I don't care how beautiful it was before we let the landfill move. Look, you leave. You leave.
I know. I mean, I've got a whole series of questions about these agreements, and I don't know if we're...
We'll, we'll get into that. I think we're, we're finished right now on this discussion. I think we have to be careful. There is, there is litigation going on right now, and we just have to be careful about what we're, what we're getting into here.
Well, if you'd, if you'd like me to, to send you some information within seven days of precisely the kind you've mentioned, I will do that. You just got to tell me where, Mr. Mayor, whether it's yourself, or I would imagine your attorney?
I'll, I'll say this to you again, what I said before, you can send it to Commissioner McDowell.
I will. Thank you.
Commissioners, open up the floor.
I'd like to say something, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate you being here tonight, and I want you to know something right off the start. These men up here are hardworking city councilmen. They want to do what's right by the people in their area and what their neighbors as well. We're all, I think, we're so close in this area, Beach Park, and, and Wentz Parburn-Zion, we're all pretty close-knit community, and yet there's warts and wrinkles and bumps and bruises between the three, and difficulties arise, and we don't get them settled because we don't sit down and get them worked out in advance. I'm here to tell you tonight, I agree with all of you. I live out in that area, and I have since 1998. I come back here from, I retired once, second or third time, I don't know, but anyway, I come back here after I'd been out west for several years, and I like mountains. So when I, looking around for a house, I saw that nice little home out in Lucky Court, and I really liked it. My wife was still alive then, and it had everything in it that we wanted, everything, right down to the fans, ceiling fans, and the bedrooms and all that kind of stuff. You might not be interested in that, but I am, because I love my little house. So time along there, we bought the house, and I look out to the north of me, and like I said, I'm a mountain kind of guy. There's a mountain over there. But it isn't the kind of mountain that I like. And so I started kind of observing things that were happening. I seen all these semi-trucks coming down Green Bay Road and, and all the way up from the north and from the south, and I asked, I said, where are these trucks coming from? They said, Chicago, there's some kind of a building construction thing going on down there. They were dumping their crap, excuse me, they're dumping their stuff up here in Zion. That irritated me. But on a, on a good day, when it was a nice northerly wind, Zion, 49, 4109 Lucky Court, would get dust, lots of dust. I can't even open my windows in the summertime at times. So you know what I did? I said, I can't live like this. I'm not a complainer. I was on this, working for the city. I don't want to make a lot of noise. I never said anything to anyone, except to Frank Flamini. Frank Flamini was one of our city councilmen, and he was kind of a middle between, between the landfill and the city. And if we had any complaints about the smell or any of the other issues, we'd go to him, and he'd go to the landfill, and things would be all right for a while. Frank did his job. But as time went on, things got worse, and I'm still looking at that mountain. Boy, that's a dew down now. You have to, you have to get field glasses to see the people working on the top of it. That's all right with me, as long as they keep their smell and their dust and all the rest of their junk up there, but they're not. It's not, it's not our fault that, that all this stuff blows down here. It isn't all their fault if they don't care about us because we're not telling them how we feel as a group. They've heard from us individually. They have. I'm tired of, of living the way I have been all these years. And when you come in, the last time, I thought to myself, I'm not going to keep my mouth shut anymore. I don't like to argue with any entity, especially a multimillion-dollar operation like the landfill people are. They're not enemies, but they're big business, and that's what they're interested in, big business. And I don't like it because some of it turns out to be monkey business, as far as I'm concerned. And so as a homeowner, and as a, as a city councilman, and as a citizen that pays taxes in its community, I have a hard time dealing with this. And I appreciate the mayor letting me say my little speech, but that's the way I feel. So whatever develops tonight or from night forward, hope that we can work things out in a peaceable, intelligent way. That would be good with me. But I don't want to live under this curtain of dust and, and garbage papers flowing all over. I've got to say this, those, they're good about sending people to pick up paper, they really are. I see guys out there every now and then picking up paper, and those turkey ducks, aren't they turkey buzzers beautiful? They go up and down Ninth Street. I get a big kick out of watching them. You know, I don't carry my 22 in the car anymore. But anyway, I, I, I just want you to know that I, I'm, I'm in full agreement with you that you haven't issued, and I, and I know what it's all about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I guess I'd like to know from the representatives from ADS, I mean, you've heard all these, these issues, and I don't know if you're an expert in landfills. I think you represent the company, but are there ways of addressing these issues that, that you're aware of, and can they be addressed? And will you address them?
Yeah, I mean, there are ways to address issues, and the company will be filing, provided that the, the property is the next, will be filing a sighting application, which will address all of these operational issues. I know the city will hire a, an independent consultant to review the application and the proposal made by Advanced Disposal. I think that's the appropriate time to get into the details. I'm not an engineer. I've, I've done a lot of landfill work on the legal side, but I don't hold myself out to be an expert on, on the types of mitigating measures you're looking for. But they will be in the application, and then we can have a give and take with the consultants for the city, and ultimately, it's up to the city to, to decide whether to approve the landfill or not.
Yeah. At that, I'm just, I don't know the answer to this question, which is why I'm asking it. In those kind of discussions, can the lawyer that's representing these neighbors here, can they also sit at the table and, and know what's being discussed and have any input?
The sighting hearing will be open to the public.
Okay.
It's a, it's a public meeting, and, you know, I'm assuming the past sighting hearings took place in this chamber, and I would anticipate that the, the next one would too. When do you anticipate that would be?
As I mentioned last time, there's no application prepared. Obviously, until the property's the next, you know, the company is not going to put all the resources into preparing a, a final sighting application. But I know they're anxious to get it done, so I don't think it's going to be years out.
Okay, I mean, are we, are we talking two weeks af, if it gets annexed, two weeks after it's annexed?
It'll be, it'll be months.
Two months? Two years?
I would...
Five years?
No. I think less than two years, but not two months, you know, because a lot of work has to be done to put the, the application together.
When is the present site scheduled to be at capacity?
I think it has seven years left, if I'm not mistaken. Ten? Ten.
Okay.
Yeah. I do have more questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. How can I get a copy of Section 39.2E-5? Because that's referred to in the annexing agreement, and I don't know what that is.
That's the section under which, Section 39-2 of the Environmental Protection Act is the sighting statute. That's, we would apply for an expansion under that, and that governs the proceedings.
Okay. So... So that's an Illinois EPA statute?
Yeah, it's in the Illinois statutes, it's in the Environmental Protection Act of the state of Illinois.
All right, so if you do not get approval from the Illinois EPA, then the annexation, according to what I'm reading here, is null.
I think we have, if, if the, if the sighting is not approved, the annexation agreement provides that we can disconnect, petition for disconnection to the city, and the city agrees that it will disconnect the property.
Is that standard in most agreements? In the property value protection agreement, it does state that the property is within 1,500 feet. And then you list additional properties, which I read earlier, but it doesn't say anything about the properties on Kenosha Road. So how are those properties going to be addressed?
Well, they'll be within the 1,500-foot distance.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, so they're covered by this.
Sure. All right, get it. And you are in the process of purchasing that property?
Well, they, the company has acquired some of the properties. I think they're attempting to acquire others. They haven't done, you know, haven't gotten them all acquired. And I know some of the people here have mentioned that they've been approached. I'm not involved in that, so I don't know all the details, but I know it's ongoing.
There are four properties left.
Yeah, right. And they know who to contact? I mean, what hurt tonight is that they feel like they're, you know, being cornered in those agreements.
Yeah, I mean, I, they, they can contact Jim Lewis at the landfill. I think he's been out doing the outreach to many of the property owners. I think the contracts are being done internally by the company, by the in-house lawyers at the company. I have not been involved in that.
It's my understanding that Mr. Lewis has been in contact with property owners, at least a couple... least a couple of the property owners, and they are, or somebody has, and that there have been offers tendered in the neighborhood of four hundred thousand dollars?
That are not worth paying for the rent on.
I'm just, wait, hang on, hang on, hang on.
That's not true.
Okay.
I just want to tell you, it's a buyer option. They have the right to cancel that option at any time for no reason. So they could get everything they want, and they decide, we're not buying your house. So they could tell them it's a million dollars. They could buy for a million dollars. But that's, they could tell you, five years from now, we're not gonna buy it. You have no recourse, John.
Okay, all right. Our attorney won't advise on a document she hasn't seen. Which is a pretty smart attorney we have. Okay.
So, the annexation agreement does talk about some of the conditions of the landfill. Mentions odor, mentions complaints and things like that. It also talks about patterns of complaints. And, so this is a new agreement. And I'm assuming that the agreement that you're working under now also has the same type of clause about patterns of complaints. And I'm wondering if, and you're supposed to be keeping track of those patterns of complaints.
Right.
So do you have current patterns of complaints that we could anticipate in this new annexation and the new landfill? And I guess I'd, I'd like those issues addressed, at least before I make a decision on this annexation, dealing with those patterns of complaints, both in the past and what we're experiencing now, and then going forward. How, how is the company gonna address those patterns of complaints?
Well, I'm, I know they, they keep track of the complaints, and under their permits, they have certain obligations, depending on what kind of an issue is involved. You know, I, I don't work at the landfill. I don't have day-to-day interaction with them in terms of how they deal with the complaints. But I know they keep a record, and, and they have to be responsive to the state of Illinois and on their air permit, on their land permit, to make sure that they're operating under the, the permit requirements.
Okay. Well, I mean, I'd like to know going forward, what will hap, how will these patterns of complaints, if they emerge, you know, how are they gonna be addressed? And I think we can use what is currently happening as a, as a guide. So I guess I'd like some assurance that those issues are gonna be cared for.
Yeah, I mean, they have to stay within their permit. And that's, that's the, you know, if you look at a, a permit for a landfill, it's, it's a fairly thick document. And it has a lot of standards in it for both, for air issues, land, groundwater issues, and they have to meet all those requirements. So they have to keep track of any complaints that are received.
Do they keep track of their response?
I believe they do.
Are turkey vultures included in that?
I, I know, if they get a complaint about, you know, they have, they have a burden mitigation program at the landfill. That's all I can tell, I mean, they do have a burden mitigation program. They have a person that's there all day long, dealing with that issue.
Which makes more annoying, because cannons to scare the birds off. So that adds to the array of noises we hear on a daily basis.
The cannons are on tigers, so the tigers will hop and run off in the middle of the night. The birds aren't there.
All right, we gotta, we gotta get back under control. We're, this is, this is a discussion that the council's gonna have, and I can't have everybody jumping in. Please. Mike, do you have more?
That's on the annexation part of it. And it looks like the annexation is really tied in.
All three items are tied together.
Yeah, they're all tied together.
Yep.
So, Mayor, I don't, I don't have enough information to make a decision on this.
Commissioner Fisher, if you have any comments, questions?
No, most of, most of the concerns and questions have been covered by, you know, Commissioner McDowell and some of the back and forth that we've had here tonight. I would like to know if there is additional mitigation steps above and beyond what is currently being done, that could be done? And why it's not being done? Those, those are questions I would like answered. If there's additional steps that Advance can take to contain dust and debris, if they know they can do, if they could do it, why don't they? So that would be my concern is, because even if the, even if the expansion does not continue, we still have issues with the existing landfill. How do we get them to address those? And so I think that's where I'm at right now, is, is there something else that can be done that's not being done?
I, I think the mayor's point is well taken, that if, if we don't annex and go with a siting agreement, possibly Lake County will. And, you know, I would much rather be the, the people that are at the table and discussing these issues, because I care about our neighbors. And it's not just you guys. I just wonder, how many else, how many other people here are from the Borlai acre subdivision near Lucky Court, where Commissioner Duteen lives?
How many of your Zion residents are here?
That are experiencing some of these issues?
Three.
I wonder where they are.
Well, we used to be Zion, but we got re-annexed into Winthrop Harbor. So basically, we really are Zion.
Well, no.
Well, I mean, we were. What I'm saying is, so we are affected because...
You may have had a Zion mailing address. You were never part of Zion.
I was, I used to have a Zion one.
No, you had a Zion, where were you, where are you located?
Winthrop Harbor.
Right. We, we have...
They didn't even give me a Winthrop Harbor address.
All I'm saying is that, is that you had a Zion mailing address. That does not make you part of Zion. It's where you pay your taxes to.
It's unincorporated, maybe.
It's unincorporate, it could be unincorporated, but if, nothing has been de-annexed from Zion and gone into Winthrop Harbor in the last fifteen years that I know about, at least.
My house has been there.
Or twenty years. I, I don't, I don't know that that's ever happened. But anyway. I guess I need to, I, I need to, if I'm hearing things correctly up here, this is not gonna proceed tonight. And I, and we'll get a motion, and we'll get all, but I wanna, I wanna address what's the next step. And I think we need to get all the players in one room. I think we need to have representatives from the neighbors to say, this is what we're looking for, as protections on the operations of the landfill, that, that you're not getting now, that you're unhappy with. I don't know what they all are. You're the only ones who do know what they are. We need that from you. We need to get Benton Township there, because I wanna know what Benton Township is, is talking about. I need to get a couple of the property owners that are on Kenosha Road, because we need to know exactly what they're talking about and what, what they want out of this. And we need to get, who else is here? There's, there's a couple other groups here. We need to get Advanced Disposal in the room to hear what people are talking about and what we would like. And I understand that there's been a lawsuit. But what we're trying to do is establish what's gonna happen, and it's my understanding that the lawsuit was kinda like from when it started backwards. I would like to get some expectations, clear expectations, of what is going to happen from here into the future. And then, we can make a decision on what to include in the annexation agreement that Advanced Disposal will agree with, that will make as many people as possible happy. Now I lost my train of thought. Hang, hang on just a minute. I wanna, I wanna go forward and see what's gonna happen with that. Because the only, the only hammer we have over Advanced Disposal is what is specifically stated in the host agreement. Pretty much, and the siting.
The siting is actually the main thing.
Right. But I just, I wanna be sure that we understand what the neighbors are looking for. And that you understand what the neighbors are looking for, because no one's talked to you yet.
Well, I, I agree with you, Mayor. And I think it's especially important that we nail this down in advance, because if, if it's gonna be a year or two before we actually get to a, a, a siting agreement, you know, some of these issues, we might not have as many people here talking about it. So I would like to have those things nailed down first.
A siting issue? The siting?
Never mind.
This place will be packed. Every one of these people's gonna be there for the siting.
Well, I, I wanna know then what I'm, I wanna know what I'm talking about then, when that comes. And, and I don't right now.
And, and for the siting agreement, as their attorney expressed, we will, we will hire an expert on landfills to represent Zion on the information that's in the application. It's not, I mean, you'll sit here and listen to it, but there'll be somebody sitting here who knows about landfills and landfill expansions. So you will have that help. And I guess if, if the, if there is a, it was expressed that there should be a, there should be some type of compensation, it's come up, you all need to be prepared to talk about that. What are you looking for? What would Advanced Disposal be willing to do, if anything? But we need that before we get into, we need all those things answered before we get into a meeting. Are there any other questions? And then, and I, I guess I just wanna say, I am the way I am up here, because I have to keep control of the meeting. I truly appreciate the dilemma that you're in. This is very difficult for me, because I have some longtime friends sitting out here in the audience, and I know the impact that it's had on them. But I also have to, on the other side, I have to take off that hat, and I have to put the hat of Mayor of Zion on, and remember the constituents that, that I represent also. This is very, very difficult. And if it appears that I'm nasty, sometimes I have to be that way. But Kurt, did you have a one?
Yeah, as, as a citizen that lives on Kenosha Road, I'd like to know how to get a seat at that table, sorry.
Oh, I would, I would say, you, this group needs to select three or four people to be at that table. And I'm going to leave that up to you to do that. And when the time comes, you'll be notified that we're setting up a meeting, and we all hope to, to come to a conclusion that everybody can live with. The city, Advanced Disposal, and the citizens that are around there.
Should we have someone that represents us, the four homeowners that are still sitting there?
Yeah, I'd say have one. One or two.
But I mean, like, we don't, who's gonna contact us?
I will. Somebody will, I will, yeah.
And I mean, I just wanted to say real quick, and I'm sorry, I know that you, I wasn't just to talk, but they're talking about having, you know, our, our properties are guaranteed for a price. Well, that's great, but I had my home there for thirty years. I've already been kicked out of my home. The landfill's digging thirty feet behind me. Now they wanna tell me I get what the property value is for, when they're a multimillion dollar company, they don't wanna pay me a compensation for already taking away my property?
Okay, all right, right, all right. Any commissioners have anything else to say? David, do you have anything that you need to?
Not at this point, I'm just gonna have a meeting.
Okay. Is there a, is there a motion of some type that somebody wants to present?
I'm gonna make a motion that we table this action.
I don't, do we wanna table, or do you wanna continue it?
Do you wanna continue it to a meeting specific?
Uh, no.
No?
I don't think so. Either, I, I don't think we can do this all in two weeks.
Okay.
Why don't we just, why don't we just table it? But people have to understand, a lot of times, people, and I, my question was, do we need a continuance of this? Do we, do we need a tabling motion? Often, when something is tabled, people think it is gone forever. It's not gonna come up for more discussion. It is, it will be, this will be brought up at, at future meetings, so I just wanna be sure everybody understands.
Well, why don't we just put it on the agenda for our next meeting? And if we're ready to make the decision, we can. And if we're not, then we'll table it again.
Okay.
Then continue it to the April sixteenth.
Well, then continue it till the April sixteenth meeting, and you can all join us again on the April sixteenth.
Is there a motion to that effect?
Is there a motion to that effect?
That's my, that's my motion.
We have a motion?
Can I do it for both of these?
Can we do all three, or do you wanna do them separate? Let's do them all separate.
Do them all separate.
Yeah.
Well, you know what, we're not even there.
Oh, wait, we're still in, we're still in Citizens Comment, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're still in Citizens Comment. We'll, we'll get to that when we get to it. I thank you all. Item number six is the consent agenda. Would the clerk please read the consent agenda?
Do you wanna take a short break and see if people wanna leave?
No, because they're gonna wanna be here for the, for this. Would the clerk please read the consent agenda?
Approval of minutes of a regular meeting held on March nineteenth, two thousand nineteen at seven P.M. Bills vouchers one-three-one-six-three-three through one-three-one-seven-six-three drawn on Huntington National Bank. Total, six hundred and eighty-five thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars and four cents.
Is there a motion? Move to approve. You have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Duteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number seven is considered passing resolution as follows. Seven A is approving, approving grant of conservation easement rights and conservancy covenant per Mayor Hill. This is at the request of the Zion Park District. This concerns a property on the southwest corner of Lewis Avenue and one-seventy-three. The Flatout Farms LLC of Illinois wishes to donate the property to the Zion Park District. And they need a covenant. And we are the, what are we under?
Beneficiary, is there assigning the conservation covenant over to the city of Zion?
Okay. That's what I meant to say. It is, the donation of real property is described in the donation, in the donation agreement consists of two groups of acreage. First, there is approximately nine acres, which the parties agree may be used for outdoor recreation purposes and improvements associated with such outdoor recreation purposes, including parks, amenities, restrooms, parking lots, walkways, and lighting for both. Second, remaining approximately twenty-six point seven-four acres, consists of open space conservancy, and the parties agree that this acreage shall remain open space conservancy, with the only acceptable improvements being the installation of trails, paths, benches, observatory platforms, and signage. And the land is being donated to the Park District. It's my understanding that the twenty-six, twenty-seven acre park parcel, approximately twenty-seven acre parcel is primarily wetlands and flood plain. And the remaining nine acres, the Park District is, I don't know whether they will actually do it or not, but they're looking at putting a dog park out there. And the, so, that's what they wanna do, and they want us to be the beneficiary. We have to enforce the things that...
You have, you have the right, but not the obligation to enforce the covenant, if you, if the city so chooses.
And any cost to the city on enforcing the covenant will be paid by the Park District, I believe.
The Park District is indemnifying the city.
Yeah, so.
All right, I'll make the motion that we approve this grant of conservation easement per Mayor Hill.
You have a motion? Is there a second? And a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Duteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number eight is considered passing ordinances as follows. Eight A is authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement relative to the property located south of Russell Road and west of Kenosha Road per Mayor Hill. Is there a motion?
Move that we table this to the next, until the next meeting?
You have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Duteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. There is no discussion on tabling motion, is there?
No.
Okay. Item eight B is annexing certain territory of the city of Zion, Lake County, Illinois, lake located south of Russell Road and west of Kenosha Road per Mayor Hill. Is there a motion?
Same motion.
Snicker. Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Duteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item H C is authorizing the execution of a second amendment to the host city agreement with Advanced Disposal Services, Zion Landfill, Inc., per Mayor Hill.[1761.13]
Our fire department is currently in possession of a 2005 Ford Expedition that we purchased used from the Lincolnshire Riverwood Fire Department 2013 as our command vehicle. It was removed from service in 2016 when our foreign fire techs board purchased a new command vehicle. Its current mechanical condition and the cost of upkeep has now been recommended that we remove it from our fleet. So I respectfully request the vehicle described below. 2004, 2005 Ford Expedition with the VIN number you see with 105,854 miles. Be declared surplus and sold by bid.
I'll make that motion. Do we have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Dutton?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number nine is request permission to accept proposal of assurance agency for the renewal of property liability and workers' compensation insurance effective May 1, 2019 per Administrator Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. As you mentioned, this is, it's time for renewal of our workers' comp and our liability insurances, including automobile, umbrella, all that stuff. You have, according to the packet, I would actually direct you to page three, which is the, shows the matrix of all the renewal quotes. We actually had pretty pleasant results as a result of this renewal. We're looking at about a 4.9% decrease in premiums across the board. 4.6 of that decrease is in workers' comp, which saves us about $35,000. The rest is, like I said, the automobile, coverage, liability, et cetera. We're looking at about a $50,000 decrease in premiums compared to prior year. Some of that in workers' comp is due to reduction of staffing, but all, part of it's also claim reductions that we've tried to implement over the past couple of years. So I would recommend approval of the renewals as presented here. There is one other item I'd like to add on here, though. You see at the bottom of the page, kind of what's, what's happening as far as best practices and recommendations from, from the industry is that cyber liability and also workplace violence and active shooter insurance has become kind of the accepted standard and we have not done that in the past. Part of it's due to insurance just kind of skyrocketing on its own. You have what are called indicators, indications down there of if we implemented a cyber policy, cyber liability policy and also workplace violence and active shooter policy, we'd be looking at about $18,000 of additional premium. I would, due to the favorable results of the policy renewal, I would like to recommend that we also go out and quote for these two policies and get these underwritten as well. We'd still be recognizing a net savings, but also be protecting us against some pretty significant exposures that we haven't had in the past.
Is there a motion?
All move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second?
Is that with the, David's recommendation for the additional coverage?
Does your motion cover that?
Yes.
Yes. Is there a discussion? Speaking of additional risks that we have, we've talked a number of times about trying to put up some protective barriers for both the building department and finances up in the lobby. And has that gone anywhere?
It hasn't and it's primarily in, I hate to say that, you put them on a price tag on the risk, but it's one of those things that we, we still need to look at and I need to revisit that as some, on me to revisit that with the chief. I also wanted to look at with our liability insurance to see, like with workers' comp, there's grant programs to help with safety equipment to reduce workers' comp claims. I'd like to see if we had something like that, if we kind of bolstered things up, if that might have a benefit to our premium as well. Basically say, okay, if it's going to cost $10,000 to do or $20,000, we might see that savings over time and a reduction of premium, so.
And I know this, this is like string a little bit apart from what's on the agenda, but I also think it would be a good idea if we had, I mean, I've been here for six years and as far as I know, I've never been part of a city hall drill on if somebody comes in here with a gun and what you do and what door you go out and how you get out and what happens. And I think that would probably be good, a good thing to do within the next couple of months, just so people know what to do instead of hiding under a desk, how to get out of here. So anyway, okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Dutton?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 9B is consider approval of additional 100 hours for legal representation for the nuclear waste storage compensation project per, it says, that's spelled M-A-Y-O-R-H-I-L-L, but it reads Director Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm going to try and keep this relatively brief, but the, the pursuit of compensation for the nuclear spent fuel that's down in the shoreline, still active, still going on. We've been working on this pretty diligently for three years. Obviously, things with the federal government don't move quickly, especially when there's politics involved and changes in election cycles and things like that. So we've had to take two steps forward, one step back, keep pushing, keep trying to make progress. We are, in my opinion, we had a meeting with all of the taxing body representatives, what, probably a week and a half ago, Commissioner McDowell? Updated, with an update from our attorney representing the entire group as to where we're at, where we're going. I believe we're in a better position than we've ever been, but not saying that there's money on our doorstep yet. But we're lining things up as far as having representatives and support in the right committees and the right places that have, also have plants and nuclear waste in their communities. So we're, we're still pushing forward on this. And like I said, we're making a lot of progress on this with other communities and it's a national issue. So we initially approved 25 hours to start the process. We approved an additional 50 once it kind of got traction. And then once it really started going, we did an additional 125 hours. So we were at 200 hours total and that's being shared, the cost of that's being shared by all of the taxing bodies based on their share of the tax bill. So we hit that 200-hour cap just a little bit ago. We're at 198.5. And we were going to revisit at that point to see where we're at, to see if we wanted to keep continuing based on kind of where we're set up in this, the chess game, so to speak. I would recommend that we would approve the additional 100 hours for, for legal representation. Our, if they went the full 100 hours, we'd be looking at about $4,000 being the city's share of that.
And I guess I would just want to update anybody and everybody that the first, there were four parts to the legislation. The first was that there would be a committee formed to, of, made up of departments of the federal government that would investigate what things are out there, what we should be doing for communities that have spent fuel rods in them. The second was the flat-out grant. The third was the first-time homebuyer tax credits. And the second was business tax credits. The first part of it is actually moving and I have been invited with two other, I believe it's two other mayors, one from Santa Nobry, California, and one from, I believe it's, it's either Main Yankee or one of them in Vermont. And I will be participating in a, I'm considered an expert, but I'm, I'm an expert on the impact that spent fuel rods have on a local community. And this is being kept very, very small right now. I asked if I could bring Mr. Nabel and another individual out there with me and they have said no, that they, they, right now, they're trying to keep it very, very small. There'll be a representative from the Department of Defense, Nuclear Regulatory Commission, Department of Energy, Economic Development, the Chamber of Commerce, and there's, I believe there are 12, 12 organizations. And the mayors will be given a 20-minute presentation on the impact that this, that this has had, decommissioning and spent fuel rods have had in their communities. Then the representatives from these organizations will be asking us questions about what they can do in their particular department, the Department of Energy versus the NRC versus Economic Development. And I'll be out there the, the, I'm going out the 11th. The meeting is the, is, no, excuse me, I'm going out there the 9th. The meeting is the 10th and I'll be coming home on the 11th. And we'll be addressing those things. There will be meetings to follow that, which will include larger representation from those departments and more people from throughout the country. So it's just, we're on, we're on, we're making some, some traction, but it's still a long push uphill. So anyway, so do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion that we add another 100 hours to the legal representation for the nuclear waste storage.
You have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Dutton?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 9C is consider adopting official zoning map of Zion per Director Ianson.
Thank you, Your Honor, Commissioners. This is a housekeeping matter. We just recently revised and updated our zoning map. Part of the procedure is for the city council to officially adopt the map. Staff is recommending to adopt the current zoning map.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the official zoning map per Director Ianson.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion?
I can't read it, but I'll second it.
This is very small.
Is there a discussion other than you can't read it? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Dutton?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 9D is consider supporting and endorsing the initiative of Zion Together per Mayor Hill. You have, we had a presentation here at the last meeting from Supervisor Neal and two students that she had been working with on Zion Together, and she asked if we would participate in the program by providing some signage. And I believe it was a couple of ride-alongs, I, I think. And I guess the question is to, we need to officially say, yes, we'll do this.
Well, they also asked for signage. I didn't know.
I said signage.
Oh, you did, okay.
Yeah, yeah. We discussed that.